For being here and participating. At this point, I call for the invocation Pastor Chris Carrasco of the King's Grand Presbyterian Church. Will you play it? Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us join together in prayer. As we gather after a long weekend to celebrate the achievements of our work, may your blessing rest on this work that is about to commence. And as we gather, we're aware of so many people who have left homes and belongings for safety anticipating Hurricane Dorian. May those in harm's way make good and safe choices, may as many as possible be spared of such catastrophic damage. For we too are no strangers to the destruction such hurricanes can cause. And we pray for those in the Bahamas who've already experienced that kind of devastation and have a long road to recovery. We also pray for victims in West Texas, a tragedy that unfortunately hits too close to home for us. For those who are injured, we pray for complete recovery. For those mourning the loss of a loved one, we pray for comfort and peace. And for we who continue to mourn the losses in our community, we pray for healing. As we turn now to our attention, for the purposes of this gathering, may we seek the good of all people living in Virginia Beach. Rich and poor, male and female, black and white, documented and undocumented children and older adults, may the decisions made this evening reflect your will and benefit all those who live in this city. And in the wake of recent personnel changes, we pray for the right people who will provide new leadership, both in the interim and in the long-term future. And so, Lord, after this meeting and every meeting, we pray that it will be a little more here in Virginia Beach as it is in heaven. Use us, oh God, for your purposes and your will this evening, for we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Plaid to believe.
Plaid to believe. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get the roll call, please?
All present, sir.
All are present. Can I get a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
May I get a motion to approve the informal and formal sessions of August 20th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
I'm nervous. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
All right, and then could I get a motion to approve this special formal session of August 27th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, at this point, we have a very special presentation by Senator Bill DeStef, who is bringing forward two General Assembly Senate Resolutions. First, number 4002, 4013, celebrating the lives of the 12 killed in the May 31st, 2019 tragedy. And then, secondly, number 4016, commending the Virginia Beach Police Department Sheriff Office and all of our magnificent first responders. Senator DeStef, welcome and thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. If it's okay, I'd like to bring up Delegate Davis, Delegate Fowler, and Delegate Mieres.
That would be great. Thank you, welcome.
As well as our honor guards from the police, fire, and those who will be receiving resolutions for the families, as well as the families that are here present today.
Great, thank you. Please, come forward.
And Mayor, City Council, I'm very honored to be here today to go through the memorial resolutions, then two sets of commemorative resolutions, and then the Public Safety Officers of the Year commemorative resolution. So unfortunately, Glenn and I, this is probably our first or second time in front of council since we were on the other side, so it might be a little awkward, but I'll probably be speaking more here than I ever did on, from the dais. And that's probably a good thing. Mayor, Council, I'd like to start with Senate Resolution Number 4002, celebrating the life of Ryan Keith Cox, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Ryan Keith Cox, a highly admired employee of Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas Keith Cox graduated from Princeton High School and earned a bachelor's degree from St. Leo University. Whereas Keith Cox began his more than 12-year service with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities as a customer service provider in the call center, and then became an accounting clerk. Whereas Keith Cox was well-known for his infectious smile, and he brought joy to his colleagues with kindness, generosity, positivity. Whereas Keith Cox enjoyed fellowship and worship with his community as a member of New Hope Baptist Church. He shared his faith with others as a member of the male chorus and participated in several other church ministries. Whereas Keith Cox made the ultimate sacrifice while courageously protecting his colleagues during a mass shooting in the Virginia Beach Municipal Center on May 31st, 2019. Whereas Keith Cox will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his parents Ray and Maxine, his brother Tony and Irvin, numerous other family members and friends. Now therefore be resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Ryan Keith Cox, a vibrant member of the Virginia Beach community, a dedicated civil servant. And be it resolved further that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Ryan Keith Cox as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for his memory. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have somebody receiving this for the family, I believe. Officer, on behalf of myself, the Senate, and the House, we have this for the Cox family. Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, Senate Resolution Number 4003, celebrating the life of Laquinta Gionna Brown, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Laquinta Gionna Brown, a respected employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works, was an accomplished traveler, was beloved by family members and friends throughout the world, died on May 31st, 2019. Was a graduate of Oscar Smith High School, New York City College of Technology, Laquinta Brown was an employee of the City of Virginia Beach for more than four years. Whereas Laquinta Brown joined the Virginia Beach City Attorney's Office as a legal secretary in November 2014, transferred to the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works in February 2018 after completing a rigorous certification process to become a right-of-way agent. Whereas in the course of her duties, Laquinta Brown used her expertise in property rights to assist her fellow Virginia Beach City employees with land acquisition and other projects. Whereas Laquinta Brown was well-known for her kindness, curiosity, and sense of adventure. She had traveled throughout the United States, visited Europe, West Africa, maintaining friendships with people as near as North Carolina, as far as Togo, and the Ivory Coast. Whereas Laquinta Brown will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by numerous family members, friends, fellow employees of both Virginia Beach Department of Public Works and the City Attorney's Office. Now therefore be resolved that Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Laquinta Gionna Brown, a vibrant member of the Virginia Beach community and dedicated civil servant. Be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Laquinta Gionna Brown as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for her memory.
Mayor, Senate Resolution 4004, celebrating the life of Tara Welch Gallagher, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Tara Welch Gallagher of Virginia Beach, a devoted wife and mother and respected member of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works, died on May 31st, 2019. Was a graduate of Woodrow Wilson High School in Portsmouth. Tara Gallagher went on to earn a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in environmental engineering from ODU. Whereas before joining the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works as an engineer, Tara offered her expertise to the Virginia Beach Convention Center and Clark Nexon, the architect and engineering design firm. Whereas in the course of her six-year career with the Virginia Department of Public Works, Tara Gallagher helped oversee and maintain critical public infrastructure, greatly enhancing the quality of life of all city residents. Whereas Tara Gallagher earned the admiration of her coworkers for her compassion, humility, and unfailing professionalism. Whereas Tara Gallagher's greatest joy in life was her family. She will be fondly remembered, greatly missed by her husband Patrick, her son Patrick III, her parents Wanda and Dicky, numerous other family members, friends, colleagues at the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works. Now therefore be resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Tara Welch Gallagher, a beloved member of the Virginia Beach community and a dedicated civil servant. And be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Tara Welch Gallagher as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for her memory.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to take a minute break here and just explain, since we're in a special session, we didn't have the opportunity to do both a Senate joint and House joint resolution, so we did them on the Senate side and on the House side, and spent a lot of time putting the details together, and then passed the individual ones where we prepared for the families.
I appreciate that, Bill. And everybody, the whole delegation, thank you.
Senate Resolution Number 4005, celebrating the life of Mary Louise Crutzenberg-Gale, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Mary Louise Crutzenberg-Gale, a devoted mother and grandmother and a highly admired employee of Virginia Beach Department of Public Works, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a graduate of Cox High School, Mary Louise Gale joined the Virginia Beach City Attorney's Office as a legal secretary in the mid-'90s. Whereas while working full-time, Mary Louise Gale earned a bachelor's degree from St. Leo University and a master's degree from Troy University, completed a rigorous certification progress to become a right-of-way agent. She was also a member of the International Right-of-Way Association and served as second vice president of the ODU chapter. And whereas right-of-way agent for the City of Virginia Beach Public Works, Mary Louise Gale helped the city grow by facilitating the purchase of land for city projects. And whereas over the course of her 24-year career with the Virginia Beach, Mary Louise Gale became a source of institutional knowledge and made lasting friendships through her kindness, generosity, and grace. And whereas a devoted Catholic, Mary Louise Gale taught catechism at St. John the Apostle Church and lived her faith through her actions by volunteering her time and wise leadership with many local organizations, including as a cheerleading coach at the Association of Courthouse Recreation and many capacities at Ocean Lakes High School. Whereas Mary Louise Gale will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by her children Matthew and Sarah, and their families included beloved grandchildren Jeffrey, Genevieve, and numerous other family members, friends, and colleagues at the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Mary Louise Crutzenberg-Gale, a vibrant member of Virginia Beach community and a dedicated civil servant. And be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for the presentation to the family of Mary Louise Crutzenberg-Gale as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for her memory.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Resolution Number 4006, celebrating the life of Alexander Mikhail Gushov, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Alexander Mikhail Gushov, a hard-working employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works, who touched countless lives in the community, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a native of Belarus, Alexander Alex Gustav came to the United States in 2003 as a student. He attended Tidewater Community College, received a bachelor's degree from ODU. Whereas Alex Gustav completed a college internship with the City of Virginia Beach and was subsequently offered a full-time employment with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works, also completing a rigorous certification process to become a right-of-way agent. Whereas over the course of his nine-year career, Alex Gustav was a model professional who treated property owners and members of the public with respect. Whereas Alex Gustav maintained strong ties with his home country and often played basketball and soccer with fellow ex-patriots. Whereas Alex Gustav will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his parents Mikhail and Alina, his brother Alex Kez, his family, and numerous other family members, friends, and colleagues at the Virginia Department of Public Works. And therefore be it resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Alexander Mikhail Gushov, an active member of the Virginia Beach community and dedicated civil servant. And be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Alexander Mikhail Gushov as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for his memory.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Joint Resolution Number 4007, celebrating the life of H. Nettleton. Whereas Rich Nettleton of Norfolk, a leader in the field of civil engineering who supported the community as a member of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas born in a military family, Richard Nettleton followed in his father's footsteps as a member of the United States Army, rose to the rank captain in the 84th Engineering Battalion over the course of his 10-year military career. Whereas after his honorable military service, Richard Nettleton settled in Norfolk in 1987 and began working for the City of Virginia Beach and the Department of Public Works in 1991, then transferred to the Department of Public Utilities in 1999. And whereas as a design and construction manager for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, Richard Nettleton oversaw the design, installation, and maintenance of underground water and sewer lines. Whereas in his 28-year tenure with the City of Virginia Beach, Richard Nettleton earned a reputation for strong leadership and a commitment to professionalism. Whereas Richard Nettleton shared his expertise with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Regional Construction Standards Committee, was a member of the National Society of Professional Engineers and the American Society of Civil Engineers. Whereas Rich Nettleton will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his loving wife of 23 years, Sarah, his sons Richard Jr. and Robert, his stepchildren Byron and Mary Elizabeth, his mother Teresa, and numerous other family members, friends, colleagues at the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities. Now therefore be resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Richard H. Nettleton, a respected member of the Norfolk and Virginia Beach communities, dedicated civil servant. And be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Richard H. Nettleton as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for his memory.
Mayor, members of councils, members of council, Senate Resolution 4008, celebrating the life of Katrina Anne Marie Lucian Nixon, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Catherine Anne Marie Lucian Nixon, a loving wife and mother in Virginia Beach who served the community for 10 years as a member of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a native of Bakersfield, California, Catherine Kate Lucian Nixon lived in Florida and California before settling here in Virginia Beach after college. Whereas as an engineer with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, Kate Lucian Nixon enhanced the quality of life in the city by supporting critical public infrastructure projects. Whereas Kate Lucian Nixon was selfless and kind toward everyone she met and earned the respect of her coworkers for her keen intellect and willingness to help anyone in need. And whereas a woman of deep and abiding faith, Kate Nixon enjoyed fellowship and worship with the community at St. Gregory the Great Catholic Church where she was an active member in the Bible study group. Whereas Kate Nixon was an avid swimmer in her youth, and she relished every opportunity to spend time with her children by supporting them in their own athletic pursuits. Whereas Kate Nixon will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by her beloved husband Jason, her children Morgan, Madeline, and Mackenzie, her parents Bob and Julie, and numerous other family members, friends, and colleagues in the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Catherine Anne Marie Lucian Nixon, a dedicated civil servant and an active member of Virginia Beach community. And be it resolved further that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family members of Kate Anne Marie Lucian Nixon as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for her memory, and members of council, the families here tonight.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Resolution Number 4009, celebrating the life of Herbert Ray Snelling Jr., agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Herbert Ray Snelling Jr., a Virginia Beach entrepreneur and construction contractor, was well-known by friends and neighbors for his generosity, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas born in Norfolk, Herbert Bert Snelling spent most of his life in Virginia Beach where he created lasting memories with his beloved family. Whereas Bert Snelling loved to work with his hands, began his career building custom gates for the Burneywood Farms Fencing Company and hanging windows for Greenwich Supply Corporation. Whereas possessed of an entrepreneurial spirit, Bert Snelling pursued a Class A contractor's license and started his own company, Standing Firm Builders Incorporated, where he earned the recognition for his custom cabinetry and master carpentry skills. Whereas Bert Snelling later joined Eagle Construction Company of Virginia as a warranty manager, was promoted to project manager, inspired his coworkers through his work ethic, humility, and sense of humor. Whereas a man of deep, abiding faith, Bert Snelling enjoyed fellowship and worship with the community as a member of Crosswalk Church in Virginia Beach. Whereas Bert Snelling will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his wife of 38 years, Sonia, his children Melissa, Herbert III, and their families, his mother Veronica, his father Herbert Senior, and numerous other family members, friends, and colleagues. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Herbert Ray Snelling Jr., respected member of the Virginia Beach community. And be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Herbert Ray Snelling Jr. as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for his memory.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Resolution Number 4010, celebrating the life of Christopher Kelly Rapp, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Christopher Kelly Rapp, accomplished public works professional, a respected employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a graduate of Green Run High School in Virginia Beach, Christopher Chris Rapp earned a bachelor's degree from University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and Old Dominion University and a master's degree from Virginia Polytech Institute and State University. And whereas Chris Rapp started his career at McKinley &amp; Company in Ashland, then joined Henrico County Department of Public Utilities. He went on to serve as public works director in Caroline County, Stafford County, and Polotone County. And whereas Chris Rapp returned to Hampton Roads and served as a stormwater management regulatory engineer for the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works for 11 months, earning the admiration of his coworkers for his vast professional experience and unfailing kindness. Whereas a talented musician, Chris Rapp played the bagpipes, was a member of several renowned pipe and drum bands, including the Tidewater Pipes and Drums. Whereas Chris Rapp will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his loving wife, Betsy, his parents, Michael and Patricia, and numerous other family members, friends, and fellow employees of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Works. Now therefore be resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Christopher Kelly Rapp, a dedicated civil servant who strengthened communities throughout the Commonwealth. And be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family, Christopher Kelly Rapp, as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for his memory.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Resolution Number 4011, celebrating the life of Robert Thomas Williams, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Robert Thomas Williams of Chesapeake, beloved husband, father, grandfather, dedicated employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a native of Ohio, Robert Bobby Williams served his country during the Vietnam War as a member of the United States Navy stationed aboard the USS America. After his honorable discharge, he attended the Virginia Wesleyan College, earning a bachelor's degree in 1975. Whereas during his long tenure as a city employee, Bobby Williams became a source of institutional knowledge and was trusted and respected by his coworkers. Whereas Bobby Williams had the most recently worked as a special projects coordinator with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, where he used his expertise to assist with important programs, including the Virginia Beach Seawall. Whereas in December 2018, Bobby Williams was recognized as one of only two employees in the City of Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities with more than 40 years of service to the City of Virginia Beach. Whereas Bobby Williams will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his wife of 49 years, Sharon, children Robert Jr. and Sarah and their families, numerous other family members, friends, and colleagues at the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities. Now therefore be resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness the loss of Robert Thomas Williams, dedicated civil servant, respected member of the Chesapeake community. And be it further resolved that the Senate of Virginia prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Robert Thomas Williams as an expression of the Senate's of Virginia's respect for his memory.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Resolution 4012, celebrating the life of Joshua Ryan Hardy, agreed to by the Senate July 9th, 2019. Whereas Joshua Ryan Hardy, a mentor to young people in Virginia Beach and a highly admired employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a member of Norfolk, Joshua Hardy was born Dennis Angelo Haskins, changed his name later in life to honor his beloved grandfather. Whereas Josh Hardy worked in Norfolk for 12 years before joining the City of Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, where he helped strengthen the city's infrastructure for more than four years as an engineering technician. Whereas Joshua Hardy lived in deep Christian faith through his actions and brought joy to his coworkers through his generosity, sense of humor, ever-present smile. Whereas Josh Hardy was an inspiration to his nieces and nephews and offered guidance to young people throughout the community as the author and illustrator of children's book, the ABC Book of Protecting Yourself from Strangers. Whereas Josh Hardy will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by his five siblings, Denise, Willie, Cassandra, Linda, and Lyndon, and their families, numerous other family members, friends, and fellow employees, Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note that with great sadness the loss of Joshua Ryan Hardy, respected employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities who supported young people in the community. Be it further resolved that clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution for the presentation to the family of Joshua Ryan Hardy as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for his memory, the families with us today.
Mayor, members of council, Senate Resolution 4013, celebrating the life of Michelle Marie Langer, agreed to by the Senate of Virginia July 9th, 2019. Whereas Michelle Marie Langer, dedicated employee of the Virginia Whereas Michelle Marie Langer, dedicated employee of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities, a vibrant memory, a member of the Virginia Beach Community, died on May 31st, 2019. Whereas a native of Lansing, Michigan, Michelle Missy Langer grew up in Ohio where she graduated from Beaver Local High School, as she lived in the Hampton Roads area for more than two decades and relished every opportunity to spend time on the beach with her friends. Whereas for the past 12 years, Missy Langer served the residents of Virginia Beach as an administrative assistant with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities. Whereas outside of her professional career, Missy Langer was an ardent fan of the University of Michigan Wolverines, Pittsburgh Steelers, and her game day cheers could be heard throughout the neighborhood. Whereas Missy Langer enjoyed the fellowship and worship with her congregation of Good Shepherd Lutheran Church in Virginia Beach. Whereas Missy Langer will be fondly remembered and greatly missed by her siblings, Deborah and Herman, and their families and numerous other family members, friends, and fellow employees of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Utilities. Therefore be resolved that the Senate of Virginia hereby note with great sadness and loss of Michelle Marie Langer, beloved member of the Virginia Beach Community and dedicated civil servant, be it further resolved that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Michelle Marie Langer as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's respect for her memory.
Mayor, Members of Council, Senate Resolution Number 4016, commending the Virginia Beach Police Department, and if we could get the police department, sheriff's office, state police, fire department, EMS, and volunteer rescue squads all to come up. Commending the Virginia Beach Police Department, Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, Virginia State Police, Virginia Beach Fire Department, Virginia Beach Department of EMS, volunteer rescue squad, volunteer rescue squads of Virginia Beach, and the other state and federal agencies that responded to the tragedy, May 31st, 2019, at Municipal Center, agreed to by the senate, July 9th, 2019. Whereas in the minutes, hours, days, and weeks following the Amish shooting, the Virginia Beach Municipal Center, local, regional, state, and federal public safety and rescue agencies responded to the immediate and long-term needs of Virginia Beach community. Whereas the Virginia Beach Police Department, Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, and Virginia Beach State Police played critical and valuable roles in the immediate response to the tragedy. Whereas the Virginia Beach Department of EMS, volunteer rescue squads of Virginia, and the Virginia Beach Fire Department provided essential care to those who were wounded or affected by the incident. Whereas in addition to the members of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, Explosive and Federal Bureau of Investigation, I'm sorry, BATFE, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation, were involved in a variety of capacities in the aftermath of the shooting. Whereas the courageous individuals who responded to the shooting did so without hesitation and with no concern for their own personal safety. Whereas the acting, whereas while acting with professionalism, determination, compassion, personnel with many agencies and organizations provided emergency medical assistance, transportation services, security and logistics support, comfort to a community that was reeling from unimaginable events. Now therefore be it further resolved by the Senate of Virginia that the Virginia Beach Police Department, Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, Virginia Beach State Police, Virginia Beach Fire Department, Virginia Beach Department of EMS, volunteer rescue squad of Virginia Beach, other state and federal agencies that responded to the tragedy, May 31st, 2019, at the Virginia Beach Municipal Center hereby be commended for their meritorious service, be it further resolved that the clerk of the senate prepare copies of these resolutions for presentation to the all above-named organizations and agencies as an expression of the Senate of Virginia's enormous gratitude for their actions in the midst of a crisis. First we'll start with the police department. And then sheriff's office.
Can I interrupt from there?
Yes, ma'am.
His name is Miss Phil. His name is Matt Haskins, just Haskins.
Haskins. We'll have that corrected and back to you. We'll take care of that. The sheriff's office. Fire department. The EMS. All right. I think I'll see you again in a second. And the state police.
You're doing great, Bill. Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, make sure I got this one right. Senate Joint Resolution Number 459, commending Captain Harold W. Hill, agreed to by the Senate of Virginia, February 21st, 2019, agreed by the House of Delegates, February 22nd, 2019. Whereas Captain Harold W. Hill was named the Virginia Beach Fire Department's Firefighter of the Year in 2018. Whereas Harold Hill received the, excuse me, the honor after more than 20 years of service with the Virginia Beach Fire Department, having heard the calling of help, to help others in peril, as he selflessly placed himself at great risk to help his community. Whereas Harold Hill abides by the Virginia Beach Fire Department's principles of caring, honesty, integrity, and trust, is considered a mentor to others and is an embodiment of service through self, I'm sorry, self, above self, through his commitment to the department's ladder companies, his service on various communities, his work as an instructor for the Fire Explorers Program. Whereas Harold Hill is known as a captain who always goes the extra mile for his crew. He assists them, teaches them, and constantly shows them an example how to improve as firefighters. Whereas Harold Hill was instrumental in the success of the department's auto aid program with Chesapeake and Norfolk, and has been greatly involved in the mapping program with the department. Now therefore be resolved that the senate and the house of delegates concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend Captain Harold W. Hill for being named the Virginia Beach Department 2018 Firefighter of the Year, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Captain Harold W. Hill as an expression of his General Assembly's admiration for his years of service to the community and his leadership. I believe Captain Hill is deployed with FEMA team right now.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Senate Joint Resolution Number 4060, commending Deputy Amanda Vella, agreed to by the senate, February 21st, 2019, agreed to by the house, February 22nd, 2019. Whereas Amanda Vella in the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office was honored by the American Legion Princess Anne Post 113 on February 10th, 2019, for her outstanding service to the community. Whereas Amanda Vella epitomizes the meaning of determination, dedication, and professionalism as she has distinguished herself through the steadfast commitment, exhaustive efforts, and pride, purpose with the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office and by serving her community in the United States Marine Corps. And whereas Amanda Vella has been with the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office for four years in her concurrent assignment with the correctional operations, she takes time to mentor and support new deputies. Whereas Amanda Vella is a true leader in every respect of the word. She has proven her commitment to the sheriff's office by taking on the extra responsibilities of becoming a member of the emergency response team, holds many certifications and specialized area of training. And whereas before beginning her career with the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office, Amanda Vella served with the United States Marine Corps from 2010 to 2014. Her military experience has contributed to her excellence as a deputy. Whereas Amanda Vella finds the time to give back to the community through worthwhile volunteer service. She helps start a coordination, helps start and coordinates the launch with a deputy, and reading with a deputy program, which engage elementary school students in activities that help them with the sheriff's deputies in a positive light. And whereas Amanda Vella is dedicated professional who continually earns the law fit gold standard in physical fitness and is recognized as a state certified instructor. Now therefore be it resolved by the senate and the house concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend Amanda, Deputy Amanda Vella in the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office for outstanding service to the Virginia Beach community, and be further resolved that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution presented to Deputy Amanda Vella as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for her dedication to law enforcement.
Mayor, Members of Council, Senate Joint Resolution Number 466, commending Officer Catherine E. Tassa, agreed to by the senate, February 21st, 2019, agreed to by the house of delegates, February 22nd, 2019. Whereas Officer Catherine E. Tassa, dedicated and hard-working law enforcement officer with the Virginia Beach Police Department, was named the 2018 American Legion Officer of the Year. Whereas K.E. Tassa has helped make Virginia Beach community safer, keeping impaired drivers off the roads as a member of the Special Operations Traffic Safety Unit. Whereas K.E. Tassa has served as a DUI training facilitator and member of the Virginia Beach Police Department's DUI Wet Labs and DUI Conference. She also assisted with countless traffic safety checkpoints and educates local students about the dangers of drinking and driving. Whereas K.E. Tassa went above and beyond her regular duties and requested training in the Virginia Beach Police Department SWAT team's vehicles so that she could serve as a driver during high-risk incidents. Whereas K.E. Tassa is committed to continuing education and routinely seeks out training courses that will help her better serve and protect the residents of Virginia Beach. Whereas K.E. Tassa was one of the top performing officers in Virginia Beach Police Department's 2018, earning a lifesaving award and two Class Act awards. Now therefore be resolved by the senate and the house concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend Officer Catherine E. Tassa on being named 2018 American Legion Officer of the Year, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Officer Catherine E. Tassa as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for her exceptional service to the Virginia Beach community.
Mayor, Members of Council, Senate Joint Resolution Number 458, agreed to by the senate, February 21st, 2019, agreed to by the house of delegates, February 22nd, 2019, commending Bill Lindsey. Whereas William Lindsey, a member of the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad in Virginia Beach, went above and beyond the service to his community during a snowstorm, January 2018. Whereas Bill Lindsey has dedicated countless hours of service to residents as an emergency medical technician, ambulance operator. He also offered his leadership to the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad as an officer and a member of its Board of Directors. Whereas on July, sorry, January 4th, 2018, a severe snowstorm resulted in power outages and hazards throughout Virginia Beach. When Bill Lindsey heard reports that an ambulance had become stuck in the snow, he braved freezing weather temperatures and responded to the scene in his personal vehicle. Whereas Bill Lindsey helped pull the stranded ambulance from the snow and went on to assist more than nine ambulances and a city truck over the course of several hours. Whereas Bill Lindsey, dedicated to duty and concern for his fellow first responders and residents of Virginia Beach, are unparalleled. Now therefore be resolved by the senate, the house of delegates concurring that the General Assembly hereby commend William Lindsey, a member of the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad, for his service during the snowstorm of 2018, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to William Lindsey as expression of the General Assembly's admiration for his exceptional contribution to the Virginia Beach community. Mayor, Members of Council, that's it for me.
At this point, can we all rise and acknowledge and honor our public safety heroes along with our 911 and emergency management personnel? Thank you and God bless you. Thank you all. That was a most moving ceremony. Thank you very much. And thank you all for your participation. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Wood for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval on the consent agenda under ordinances, resolutions. Item 6, resolution to support limited access modification, Ray, Virginia Department of Transportation, I-264 Witch Duck Road interchange and ramp extension project with amendments. Item 7, resolution to amend resolution number 3983, Ray, transportation alternative set aside program applications. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion and second, the vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. In my statement, I would want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to recall, to record. Okay, first item up is ordinance number 1, a resolution in memory of E. George Mims, requested by council members Abbott, Rouse, Tower, Wilson, and Wooton.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner, and then the next speaker will be Andrew Jackson.
Welcome.
I wasn't sure if I'd be able to speak. These aren't my regular glasses, I didn't know, because it was on the first part of the agenda. Anyway, I brought this photo of George Mins, who's one of my mentors. He taught me a great deal about the Constitution, due process, and First Amendment, free speech. Like I said, I spoke to his family members over the weekend, and they weren't even notified. I really wish y'all would, and there weren't a lot of people here for the, in memory of the other, the victim families, because it is the first day back at school and the day after, after Labor Day. So I admire George, and I hope that you will consider naming, let me put my glasses on, though they're not the right ones, since he worked so hard for C-TAC, along with due rights for everyone, that C-TAC Elementary School be named E. George Mins C-TAC Elementary. And another thing he worked very hard for was the history of C-TAC, and I think he really wanted... C-TAC, and I think, um, he really wanted the African-American Museum and a C-TAC Museum in the C-TAC neighborhood, and I think that's something, I spoke to you, Mr. Dyer, at his memorial, that y'all could, could work on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jackson, Andrew Jackson.
Welcome, Andrew.
This is, uh, an occasion, all of you knew George, so, we all met him on different levels at different times, uh, sometimes he was, he was here, uh, opposing, sometimes agreeing with. George is my, uh, my friend. I think that, uh, for you all or somebody on the council to, 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 to have a resolution to remember him, because this community, although he worked a lot in, in C-TAC, there was no one in this community at all that could not approach George and say, "I need some help," and he would help them. He didn't care where they came from, whatever, whoever they were, if there was something that, that he felt they were wronged by, George would stand up for them. And so a resolution in his memory, uh, could not have, have done anything better, and I think that, uh, we all will miss George, this community as large, C-TAC, but the community at large will miss George. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion, anybody?
I just want to say, um, George, you know, um, coming from C-TAC and George has done so much for our community, um, and he always let me know how much work we, we have left to do, right? He, he would never let me forget that. Um, but the moments I, I cherish most is the times where we just sat back and laughed, you know, we shared the laughter over what's going on in the city, what's going on in C-TAC, how to get things better, you know, the young generation, the older generation, but he always left me with a lesson. He always gave me great advice, and that's something that, that I will always cherish and I will never miss, so, um, I'll miss George, I love George.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Anybody else? Sabrina?
I would like to thank, um, I know there are some people who may be here, uh, who came to, uh, hear, um, about the resolution, and I agree, it could have been a better job communicating to others and the family at large that the resolution was going for forth, but those who are here in, um, in, I guess, supporting the resolution, can you please stand?
Welcome.
Thank you for coming, and it is my intent, um, to make sure that, uh, resolution is presented, um, during the C-TAC Image Annual Dinner that you will be having next month, and I will also make sure that a copy of the resolution is provided for the family as well, because I did mention to them that we would make sure that they got or received a copy of that resolution. And I'd also like to thank council members Jessica Abbott, Ann Rouse, Mr. Councilman Tower, and Councilmember Rosemary Wilson for supporting this resolution. Uh, I believe in giving honor where honor is due, and, uh, Mr. Mims has worked tirelessly in the community. He loved Virginia Beach, and he also loved justice and fairness, and so at times, you know, sometimes when you speak out, you don't always, you know, make friends when you speak out for justice and fairness, but he did stand for that, and he worked in the C-TAC community, successfully advocating for the new C-TAC Community Recreation Center and advocating for inclusion of the C-TAC, um, in the congressional record to make sure that that historic landmark was preserved. And then he also did other things in the community by, you know, advocating for the establishment of, um, the Human Rights Commission and the Minority Business Council, uh, as well as establishing other, um, very important landmarks in our, in our city, and so it is with that, um, that I wanted to make sure that we memorialize his life and gave honor to him.
Rosemary?
Just briefly, um, having George, I can see him almost right now standing before us, and he always let us know exactly how he felt. There was never any doubt, and if we, he would tell us an email, and he would tell us in all sorts of ways, and he was such a legacy that has left for this beautiful community, and I just, I'm grateful for him to be a, sort of someone to sit on your shoulder, to just whisper in your ear and remind you of the right things to do, and so, I'm very grateful to knowing George, and he'll be greatly missed.
Okay, anybody else? And perhaps we can find a way that, well, we can memorialize his name somewhere appropriate in the C-TAC community, you know, we can definitely look into that. Okay, at this point, vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the resolution in memory of E. George Mims.
Thank you all. Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, number two, amend section ten dash one of the city code to change the polling location, raise central absentee voting to five-seventy-seven Central Drive, deferred from August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, recommendation indefinite deferral requested.
First speaker is Conrad Sisbenter, next speaker will be Barbara Messner.
Welcome, Conrad.
I would like to acknowledge that this is how local political decision-making should bear out normally. Citizens read a proposed change, find out its negative effects, ring the ears of those in power, and then power adopts, and then adapts. With the move for indefinite deferral, I think this early voting location change is being properly handled in order to weigh access to voting for a lower means constituents who couldn't reach this location. My wish is for just a little bit more forethought on these voting matters in the future, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, Barbara Messner, and then after Ms. Messner will be Andrew Jackson.
Welcome back.
Good evening. Yes, I, I wish that, uh, there's more due process. The city never should have even considered moving, uh, the central absentee ballot location with only two months prior to the, uh, to the vote. I don't think, and most of us didn't even know that it was the entire office, it wasn't just for this, um, for this voting time. Yeah, we have a lot of absentee voters, and many of them don't read emails, all their emails, they don't read the council agendas, and I think it would have been a disaster. It, it looks like y'all have permanently deferred it. Can you not tweak that thing? It's really distracting when I'm trying to talk. Mr. Wood, thank you. Um, like I said, we have a lot of absentee voters, it's a really large amount, and if you notice with the, um, with all these special elections, it's like we have elections one after another, it's never-ending. Um, and there were, you know, really close calls, so the absentee ballots make a huge difference. Um, the location is in a high-traffic, uh, area, in a high-jet noise area, and, um, traffic over there is already horrible, to keep displacing all the city employees when everything was, was here at City Hall was much better. And as far as these, uh, resolutions, I don't know how many people read the two hundred, the four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-page agenda for the twentieth, which is, you know, deferred to today, or the sixty-four-page, but, uh, agenda for today, but I did read most of it, and I brought this to, um, Rod Ingram's attention and other people's attention. There's so many forms that are not legal. John Moss, you've been here forever, Ms. Henley, um, this one's on the compensation. Okay.
You've been here a while, Barbara.
Pardon? Oh, I, I know, that wasn't, the reason is, okay, I'm glad you think it's funny, I don't think it's funny that we, okay, there's, on a lot of these, approved as legal, there's no type name, no witness, no notary, no city seal, and, um, like I said, people aren't paying attention.
Thank you very much.
Andrew Jackson.
I, I, I certainly don't disagree with the, uh, indefinite deferral, I think that's what's being requested. What I want to do is, is caution that, when I spoke last time, I was talking about being so close to this election, we want to make sure if we bring it back, that we bring it back next year and bring it back early, so we don't have the same problem with, with the twenty-twenty election. That's just a kind of note maybe you want to make. Good job, council.
Thank you, sir.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have deferred indefinitely the ordinance regarding the central absentee voting polling location.
Okay, at this point, we're moving on to ordinances, rate compensation for city council appointees effective July first, two thousand and nineteen, which has been deferred from August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, uh, first one, city attorney.
Barbara Messner.
Yeah, like I said, this one just happens to be the city attorney, uh, Mr. Stiles, who came from, uh, and like I said, these, these forms, everyone on council, Mr. Rouse, you're new, it's a lot of pages to go through. Um, Mr. Berluci, you're new, Mr. Tower, you should certainly notice these failures to, you know, date and witness these legal documents. Um, on May, on May fourteenth of this year, uh, the, the appointees were given a three percent, uh, pay raise, May fourteenth. This is an additional merit three percent pay raise, along with deferred comp, uh, thousands of dollars, uh, every year, um, and I don't understand the vehicle allowance, it used to be twelve thousand, now it's ten thousand a year, for some of the top-paid employees. I think with those salaries, they could, you know, afford to buy cars. Uh, the first responders, they've asked for deferred comp for years. William Bailey, you know, as, as long as I can remember, he's asked for better pay and benefits for the first responders, especially the firemen, and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have, Mr. Jackson, I have you signed up just for item three, which do you want to speak on?
This one?
Uh, yes, on the city attorney?
Oh, no, no, this, we, we doing each one of these individuals?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, have to.
Okay, so no, not that, okay, so, uh, that's the only speaker for, um, Mr.?
Okay, motion?
Move approval.
Motion for approval, second, any discussion? Mr. Moss?
I'm a great fan of the city attorney, but I do believe that his job is not more rigorous than that of the Attorney General of the United States, who has a much bigger organization to run, and therefore I think raising his compensation would be inappropriate. I'm voting no.
Mr. Wood?
And just to clarify, the appointees did not get a compensation increase until now. That is correct. That was inaccurate.
Mr. Jones, may I have your vote, please?
I'm sorry. Yeah, aye.
You can, you can still, you can still go ahead and vote.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. By a vote of ten to one, you have approved the resolution for the city attorney's compensation.
Okay, uh, next, uh, ordinance is under compensation for employees effective July one, two thousand and nineteen, deferred, B, city clerk.
Barbara Messner.
Um, I don't need to speak, I've already said that I, I appreciate all the work they do, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jackson, do you want to speak for the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Now you be kind.
Welcome back, Andrew.
You be kind.
I'm, I'm glad they're divided like this, I didn't, I, I haven't had enough contact with any of the others on here to really be able to say yea or nay, but I know that the clerk, this city clerk, and her five clerkets.
Clerkets.
She's going to get me for that.
I don't know, I could get it.
Deputy.
Thank you, deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk.
Yes, sir.
I know she's giving me the evil eye now, but I, I, I can't, they are, uh, they are whirlwind around here, and I mean, when, anytime I come or anything's going on, whether it changes, whether it stays the same, they're on top of it, they work hard at it, and so I could not, uh, avoid the opportunity or get away from it, but I had to do it. To, to, to them, they deserve whatever you choose to give them.
Thank you. Amanda and the clerkets, yes.
Right, that's all, Mr. Jackson, that's all the speakers, sir.
Oh, great, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion, vote is open.
Mr. Wood, may I have your vote, please?
Oh, I was still deciding.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the compensation for the city clerk.
Okay, ordinance is rate compensation for city appointees of, uh, effective July first, two thousand and nineteen, deferred, and we have C, city real estate assessor.
So I, I have Barbara Messner, only signed up, she's only speaker for the real estate assessor and the city auditor. Do you want to, do you want to still speak? I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you still wanted to speak. So Barbara Messner?
Even though I didn't take the time to come up here, um, Amanda worked under, uh, Ruth Frazier, and they both have always been super nice, and, uh, I really appreciate the work they do, and as Andrew said, they're the workhorses, and it's unbelievable what they're asked to do in the overtime, because I know Amanda has a family and a lot of people have families, so, uh, on the city assessor, if, if y'all look at the real estate section, some of the homes, that's so distracting, I know you can't help.
Well, then look another direction.
I know, but you're, you're moving, it's distracting, okay, I know, I know, sorry.
I don't know what else to do, Barbara.
All right, I just started.
I apologize.
Okay, come on, let's, let's get back to order here.
Yeah, okay. Nobody else seems to have the problem, but, uh, okay. The assessor, a lot of the homes, if you look up the real estate, uh, some of them haven't been reassessed since two thousand and ten. Um, so I think that needs to be looked at a little bit more closely, and some people, uh, I think pay way too much in real estate taxes, I believe, um, and on the, uh, I think it's really confusing when we vote on, in March, for these compensation and pay raises to have it come up again, and I've asked several people, and a lot of people are confused, and they seem to think it was an addition, but either way, I don't know why it would be on the agenda twice, because the budget was a lot of meetings. Okay, and on the city auditor, um, he should be looking for conflicts, and I consider it a conflict for the city council to be having the city auditor pick an independent investigative team, and for the city auditor to be involved in the, uh, in the fundraiser. Uh, there's a lot of money being spent on that, and, you know, it was a combination, uh, with Town Bank, United Way, uh, Chamber of Commerce, United Way's a partner in, uh, Bruce Thompson's Camp Grom, Grom, too, so, um, anyway, even though Mr. Moss agrees on some things, you know, no one else seems to think it's a problem for these appointees who have huge salaries, um, all of them except for the clerks, uh, to be getting vehicle allowances and, uh, and pay raises when, you know, the, the first responders, I mean, you gave it across the board for everyone, three percent, but that, that comes out of everyone's pocket, we pay. But that comes out of everyone's pocket. We pay a lot of taxes, fees, fines, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. And a point of clarification, yes, this was... The appointee salaries were deferred a number of times, but this is the first actual vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I can just point out, the vote that we took in May, not in March, was to do a general compensation increase for all employees. The appointees are not covered by that. The statute clearly says that we set their appointment on an annual basis. This is the time that we're doing that, so I think most everybody understands that. But just to make that abundantly clear, that's what the case is. And move approval for...
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Moss?
Yes, two things. First, all property is assessed annually in Virginia Beach. That doesn't mean they inspect every single property. But it does mean that they look at the relations of sales and neighborhoods and stuff, and there's a statistical analysis conducted. And if people think their assessment is in error, they can first file an appeal with the assessor, then with the Board of Equalization, and they have the option to go to the judge of the circuit court if they think their property has been judged in error. And there is a statistical analysis that they do in the end for variance across all the properties. So someone shouldn't think their property is not assessed every year. And if they have a difference of opinion, I do encourage them to go down there. But I do believe his current salary of $147,899.96 with the $6,000 car allowance is more than adequate for the responsibilities of his office, and I am voting no.
Okay, anybody else? Vote's open.
By a vote of ten to one, you've approved the compensation of the real estate assessor.
Okay, and the last one under compensation, ordinances, compensation is council appointees effective July 1, 2019, deferred since August 20, 2019, city auditor.
Move approval.
Second.
One second.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
I am supporting this, but I would have supported a much bigger than 3% cash bonus because I think that probably would more accurately capture the varying contributions that he makes each and every year in identifying issues in our community. And I would hope in the future we would think about when a bonus could be a much larger sum and more represent his contributions in terms of building public confidence in city government. And I think this probably doesn't do enough justice to that.
And I thank you for those comments. Thank you, Mr. Moss. Votes open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the compensation of the city auditor.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, item number four, under ordinances and resolutions. Resolutions to acknowledge and accept the letter of resignation from the city manager and thanking him for his service.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Since you enjoy making corrections, it's, you know, with all the meetings and everything, I read it earlier, it's May 14 when the budget... But the appointees are different, and they are appointed by city council. As far as the city manager, I just find it strange because, like I said, I looked at the paperwork and Tom Leahy, some of the pages, you know, it just has his initials. I mean, some of us know who these people are, and they can read the scribble, but the typed name should be on all documents. And when the mayor resigned April 30, 2018, his seat remained empty. I just think, you know, when you talked about what a great job Lyndon does, most of these people have huge, huge staff. The city clerks don't have that big a staff, but there's a lot of city managers. There are a lot of city attorneys. And I think it would be nice if the citizens could be more involved in, you know, having a say who the next city manager is. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do.
Mrs. Henley?
One of my many faults is that I'm just not able to be silent when I see an injustice being done. This recent deliberate, organized assault on Mr. Hanson's service as city manager is one more such injustice that my conscience just won't let me pass by without comment. What needs to be told is what has been done in the past several weeks to bring us to this point. This pattern of using character assassination, gossip, misrepresentation, and hate to bring down the people who are not of the liking of certain folks is destroying this city. I know that I, too, am a target, and that as I speak, the airwaves of the social media crew are probably criticizing my every word and vowing to get rid of this old crony at the earliest opportunity. Well, go ahead, because when you're talking about me, you're leaving somebody else alone. This assault by creating hatred is what is toxic in this city, and it has got to stop. In this particular round that has brought us here today, this is how it happened. Several weeks ago, it started with the concocted story that Mr. Hanson's contract required that the city council give him a 140-day notice that his contract would not be renewed. Since that time is now, they said that city council must take steps to terminate his contract because he is not doing a good job for the city or whatever the vague charge, and he needs to go. Of course, no such requirement exists, but it caught fire, and so many folks repeated the chant. When it apparently became known that that was a totally false way to bring this to a council action, the attack shifted. Then it became related to the issue of whether the city manager should be given the same raise that all other city employees are receiving. So then the chant became, "Don't raise the city manager's salary because he is overpaid, not doing a good job, and needs to go." It's despicable, very orchestrated, but apparently effective that political opposition operates this way in Virginia Beach. This is how we will defeat evil with love, hardly. To use this time when our people are hurting because you could use this vulnerable time to get rid of one more target is disgusting. When our wonderful staff is coming to work every day, working their hearts out for a city that they love and value, when they're struggling to cope with that horrendous attack on May 31, to pick this time to further attack the great things they are accomplishing for this city is unconscionable. That the attack has already shifted to the interim city manager is sad. Virginia Beach is rated as one of the top 10 well-managed cities in the United States. In June, all three bond rating agencies renewed the AAA bond rating that Virginia Beach has had for 10 consecutive years. Shortly after, investors showed their confidence in the city management by competing for the purchase of Virginia Beach bonds so intensely that we got the lowest interest rate we have ever received at a great savings to our taxpayers. That did not result because of unsatisfactory job performance of our top management. When we look at the report of areas of intense work this year, the list is long. Recurrent flood and sea level rise studies, something in the water, Lesnar Bridge completion, Burton Station, Housing Resource Center, Public Safety Pay, Transatlantic Cable and Regional Broadband, on and on and on. This is hardly unsatisfactory job performance of our top management. Eight pages of projects recently completed are underway. They did not happen because of unsatisfactory job performance of our top management. One project not on this list is one that comes to my mind in the event that Hurricane Dorian jogs west toward us. With Mr. Hanson's foresight and recommendation, we partnered in building the field house to strengthen it to a standard that allows it to serve as a large storm shelter, especially for people with medical needs. There are projects too numerous to mention here thrown across this city as a result of the compassion, enthusiasm, energy, and commitment of Mr. Hanson. Maybe sometimes the enthusiasm caused a trip-up of speech, but let him who never misspoke cast the first stone. To all of the staff, let it be plain that this council member has not lost confidence in you. If we make a mistake, and because we're human, we will, we will just keep working hard until we get it right. I have confidence in you, and I will be voting no on this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Vote's open.
By a vote of ten to one, you have approved the resolution regarding the resignation of the city manager.
Okay, moving forward to ordinances and resolutions. Number five, resolution to appoint Tom Leahy as acting city manager.
Still moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, we have speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mrs. Marsh is the first speaker, and then the next speaker will be Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome, Rona.
Thank you. It's kind of hard to follow Ms. Henley because she had so much time, but in my three minutes, I will try to express why citizens are so frustrated, okay? Maybe Mr. Leahy would be a good manager, but our last manager raised our taxes. We don't all have a farm. We don't all have the city people who we can ask to do things like stop digging in front of our house when it's strawberry season. We're all working and trying to pay our taxes. We have a code of ethics that we've had for 50 years in this city, and from my review of it, I believe there are some shortcomings with the code of ethics. The code of ethics says you are supposed to have strong ethical reputation that is vital to earning, strengthening the public trust. And the ethical behavior is supposed to be happening in the public interest. I know for a fact that there is a department here, whoever becomes the city manager, that needs to have some ethical focus, and that would be the VBDA. You all have had emails from me with my concern about the vice chairman of the VBDA. And the fact that there was a Department of Justice, August 20 news release saying that that vice chair had agreed to pay $225,000 to resolve claims arising from his role in the alleged scheme, and he is still on the VBDA two weeks later, makes me wonder, Ms. Henley, are we really living up to our ethical best? I don't think in the corporate world, if someone had committed the same situation, that they would still be in their job. They would have resigned and gone on to whatever it was they were supposed to do. But the problem is, you all see this very differently than the taxpayers. And if Chesapeake can get by without raising our taxes, why couldn't Virginia Beach do it? Why can't you make our city affordable? We brought that up at one of our sessions at the convention center. It's not being done. I brought up statistics and graphs about the people who are living in poverty. We have more and more homeless on the street corners. You go anywhere within this city now, and because you made the fanciest ever homeless shelter on Witch Duck, and they don't seem to have enough space, people have all gone to almost every street corner. So I really would ask that whoever you pick to be our new city manager, that they get a reaffirmation of the code of ethics from everyone, especially at the top. All of you should read it. It's a 13-page document. And I will give my copy to the clerk so she can certainly include it in your next packet. I don't feel it's being lived up to, and there's a lot of people on social media who feel the same way, and that's just too bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Conrad Shisventer. Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. And then the following speaker is Barbara Messner.
Welcome, Conrad.
The job for now is Tom Leahy's. I endorse Tom Leahy as an interim fit officially. I've seen him at various functions for over a year, always giving satisfactory answers to a curious and concerned citizenry. He'll do well as an interim city manager. When time comes to have an official, non-interim city manager, Tom might very well be a good fit for that, too. Just don't shy away from a mind I'm purely speculating on right now, assuredly my own conjecture. Bruce Williams, a local mind with decades of business analysis, marketing, and management experience. I've been in a room where he has spoken twice this year, and his proactive knowledge just fills that room. Put a star next to his name. I'm just saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Welcome back.
Thank you for being nice tonight. I greatly appreciate it. Now, one reason I came to support the resolution for men's and asked that it be... I appreciate what you said, Ms. Wooton, about having it somewhere else when all the families in town, and they can attend. Ms. Henley, your speeches, you know, are a bit much. We do still have free speech and social media. You don't... Most of y'all don't even respond to social media. Most of you don't even respond to the emails. Mr. Moss, I have a FOIA request in which they've delayed because sometimes when I send it to everyone, vbgov.com, you answer with your personal one. Like, I won't say like who. Anyway, everyone doesn't feel the same about Mr. Hanson. Ms. Henley, if you were paying attention...
Ms. Messner, with due respect, we're on Mr. Leahy now.
I'm talking about Mr. Leahy taking the place of Mr. Hanson.
Okay.
This applies 100%. I said that Mr. Hanson did, and all of the people, including Bob Mathias, who's been there since Methuselah, that they do exactly what they're told, that the liability falls on this council for public safety, public health, and lowering their taxes. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I just want to respond.
John made the motion, and that's right.
Mrs. Messner is correct. I respond frequently from my personal email account. I always send a blind copy to councilmail.gov, vb.gov, which is the archive, which is the city clerk, so your FOIA will be responded to. But all my emails go to the archive. It's only out of a matter of convenience. They're forwarded through my vb.gov to my personal account. When I respond, I respond back, and all my emails are in the archive mail account. And I'm sure you'll get plenty of stuff to read and enjoy. And I'm sure I'll hear about some of it later in the week. But anyway, but I just want to make that clear for the public so they won't think somehow I have some secret email account that is not being made public. And if anybody wants to get on my mailing list, I'm happy to include them. I don't say anything I wouldn't want to see in the newspaper.
All right, anybody else? We got the motion on the floor. Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the resolution to appoint Tom Leahy as acting city manager.
Congratulations, Tom.
Can I just say one thing?
And thank you.
Because I know, Barbara, we all go back to 1986, and when Tom Leahy was just a young engineer at the time. I think we might have been both in the same age, I think. And Tom has done just a superb job his whole career at the city. And I have always heard when he goes out lately, and I always like what they hear because sometimes the truth isn't always the best thing, but it's always the right thing. And I think he will do an outstanding job as interim manager, and it's a pleasure to see him be able to finish out his career before he retires at the top. I can't think of a more fitting tribute to many, many years of service. About 40, is that close?
I'm in my 40th year, sir.
Yeah, well, congratulations on that. Thank you very much.
And ditto to that. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Jones?
Having worked with Tom very closely on a very important project in the city of Virginia Beach, being the Lake Gaston Project, I have to, again, acknowledge him as our hero. He was the guy who, when the chips were down, when we went before the federal committees, when we went before the federal courts, when we went to the Supreme Court, he was the guy who did the testimony and who made it clear and convinced all of the authorities that the Lake Gaston Project, which we all enjoy today as having the best water, one of the best water sources in the United States. And so Tom is not only an outstanding administrator, but a very loyal, very educated, very capable... an outstanding administrator, but a very loyal, very educated, very capable administrator. And I know he will do an outstanding job for the city of Virginia Beach.
Ditto, ditto. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? Okay, great. Okay, moving on, ordinance number eight, to declare 0.294 plus or minus acres city property at 1416 Kempsville Road in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to execute all disposition and exchange documents with West Coast Properties LLC and/or 7-Eleven Inc. regarding Ray's settlement of litigation.
I have two speakers. The first speaker is Conrad Shisventer. And then after Mr. Shisventer, the next speaker will be Barbara Messner.
Welcome back.
I don't have much to say on this. There would be any new information that I did the last time I came up. I supported it then. I still support it. It's in excess of city needs, so go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mrs. Messner?
There are a lot of, a lot of things going on with the 7-Elevens. Very few people are aware. I really appreciate what Ms. Marsh said about Economic Development Authority because it's amazing how much they subsidize people in private companies. We should not be helping select private companies. R.K. used to say, picking the winners and losers. Like I said, 7-Eleven, we subsidize 7-Eleven, Walmarts, and, Mr. Moss, on your statement of economic interest, you know, sometimes you don't abstain when you have stock in major oil companies. I think that's important to abstain. And as far as your replying, if I send something to vbgov.com, you know, I expect to get a reply from vbgov.com. And Ms. Wilson, you haven't emailed me in years, and Ms. Wilson emailed me at 3:47 a.m. So, there are a lot of strange things going on with the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wood?
So, I move approval for this, the corrected version, the corrected Exhibit A, which was passed out during the workshop.
Okay, any other discussion? John?
I just want that clear for the listening public. When people make accusations or insinuations that there's been a time when I have voted, when I faced my declaration of my economic interests, that I have voted when I shouldn't. There couldn't be a greater misstatement. I have always abstained, even when there was the appearance. So, you can find and show the record of that, and I'll be happy to make amends. But in still such time, that is an accusation that's without foundation. I just want the public to know that I take my integrity seriously, and I don't vote when I shouldn't.
Okay, vote's open.
Do we have a second? We did not have a second.
Oh, we have a second? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance regarding the 7-Eleven on Kempsville Road.
Revised.
As revised, thank you.
Okay, and then the last one, ordinance to carry forward an appropriate $5,362,962 and to the FY 2019, 2019 to 20 operating budget, Ray purposes approved in fiscal year 2018-19.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
I'll be happy to send those to you, Mr. Moss, because I do pay attention. I receive the summaries. And for the public who you speak about, they need to know. They can be on the list and get the summaries, the minutes, et cetera, for all the meetings. And this $5 million includes 1.8 million bonuses for Economic Development Director's Office, $40,000 Economic Development Grow Smart. Ms. Henley, you received correspondence from Beth Allen telling you, you know, the problems with Economic Development Authority and the debt, just on Town Center, City View. So, in 2018, I thought we should abolish the Economic Development Authority, which is appointed by council, funded by council. We pay their high rent at Armada Hoffler's Town Center. We purchased five garages for them, and we don't have parking at the oceanfront. So, anyway, it also includes $662,000 for body cams. Why at this point are we still needing money for the police to have body cams? They should have been implemented years ago. NAACP spoke in 2017 about the body cams, so that is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay.
I move adoption. Second.
Vote's open?
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the ordinance to carry forward.
Okay, that completes ordinances and resolutions as scheduled. Mr. Wood, do you have some appointments for us?
Oh, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, we have, um...
Sorry. I'm sorry. It was by a vote of 11 to 0. I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, I move nominate the following individual to the Housing Advisory Board, Mr. John Oliveri.
Okay, that's it. Vote is open.
And...
Yes, sir.
And we have one nomination, which I believe Mr. Bush is going to make, a nomination, not a thing after we're done voting.
No, we did that.
Oh, did we?
Already did that.
I missed it. I didn't hear him say it.
No, no, we did that in there, and this is actually a reappointment.
Oh, I thought we were going to announce it out in public so the public would know. I'm sorry, was that not your intent? Oh, okay. Well, maybe we'll talk about that later.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea, though.
Okay. All right, vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those nominated, those stated by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, at this point, is there any unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out that the document I referenced was, in fact, sitting out here, so...
Okay, would you like to?
No.
Okay.
Take it up early.
Not a problem. Any new business? Okay, we're going to adjourn to our open mic. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience.